I have three kids in three schools.
Are you videotaping?
Yes, I am.
For a reason?
Yeah, I'm documenting the election.
Documenting?
I'm document- documenting the city council run. I live here.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm documenting.
Yeah, her name's Kelly Stewart.
Oh, Kelly.
Hi.
I didn't know if it was legal if you videotaped me.
It's legal if you're in a public place.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and Kelly, it's about pictures that you actually write here in front of City Hall.
Probably if there was a rally and I took photos, yes. I'm a photo journalist.
And you know what? You were in a public place as well at a public event and some of your little friends decided to take down the pictures that I put of you, doxxing people.
I didn't dox anyone, Robin. You seem to not have an understanding of what photography is and what the law is.
No, no, I do, I do. But anyhow.
Robin, why did you say that I am paid by Chadlord or I'm not?
Okay, I don't, you know what?
Do you know that that is slander? Do you know that is slander or libel? You're falsely accusing me of something.
Okay, Kelly, you know what? Phil, you wanna take a walk with me? I'm gonna take a little break, Kelly.
Okay, good. Take your break. I'll be here.
My name is Robin. I'm running for city council. Nice to meet you too. I walked you in the middle of the snack. Here, like, here's one of my flyers.
Oh, thank you.
Sitting out here, reaching out to the community.
Can you tell me about yourself? What's your, uh, what's your background?
Yes, I, uh, my background is politics. I have my bachelor's in political science and my master's in public policy. Uh, so my passion is public service.
Oh, wow, cool. Is this the first office that you've, uh, thrown your hat in the ring for?
Yes, I, yes, it is. And it's, it's been an exciting ride so far and it's just the beginning.
Have you lived in town for a while?
I've lived here for the last three years and then I lived here back in, uh, twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen. So I've maintained ties with the community there. Hi.
Hi.
I'm Robin.
Hi, Robin. My name.
I'm leaving. Are you registered to vote?
I am, of course.
Of course. Good. Well, we're here to get people registered to vote as well.
So you're running for city council or for school board?
Oh, for city council.
City council.
Yeah, my, my template decided to die on me right there. On the side went, like, a little, a little bit sideways.
So do you live in town?
I do, yes. I live, uh, really close by, actually.
I've, I've heard your name in town. Are you part of the, like, you have kids in school or?
Well, I have, I'm divorced, so I've got three boys in three different schools. So when I moved back here, uh, my ex-husband and I decided to just keep the kids in L A U S D because they were already set in their routine.
So you're single, you're a single mom, but your kids aren't in the school system?
Correct, yeah. We, uh, we share custody, but they're, they're real close by, so we, I just take them to L A U S D.
Wow, so why do you want to run, run for city council? I waited, I waited for an interview for, uh, for a committee and I even thought, oh, my gosh, would a lot of work.
Well, because I, I've always been a believer in grassroots and like I said, this is my passion and I've always wanted to be in office. Uh, but also when I got out of graduate school, I worked with the city of L A in terms of my degree and then I got recruited. I've always worked as a project manager. And I got recruited into technology after about two years in public service. And I've been in technology and I want to get back to what I'm passionate about.
And, and so you chose, why did you choose El Segundo?
Oh, I love it here. Yeah, I lived in, uh, West L A for ten years. And when I got divorced, I moved here back in, uh, twenty fourteen. I, I love this town. Yeah, I don't even like driving to the city of L A. No, it's a, it's a great little community.
So you're pro small business?
Absolutely.
Pro law enforcement and keep El Segundo small. How, how, what does that mean?
It means there's a lot of, you know, new, not, not that we're not welcoming new people, but this town is a charm. It's because it's small and so we want to keep it. I would like to keep it that way, not, um, and expand the city to be larger.
I wouldn't even expect it.
Um, east of Imperial Highway, there's been propositions to.
East of Imperial?
Excuse me, I always call it, uh, Sepulveda P C H.
Where all the businesses are going.
Correct.
So is that you're against that or?
Correct.
Small business? You don't want, it's like a medical facility there?
No.
There's like some commercial properties, right? And then there's the, the soccer, isn't the L A Lakers or their sock, there's a soccer?
Yeah, so about half of El Segundo is corporate businesses.
Right.
And I'm for Main Street El Segundo, small businesses. And keeping the community local and representing the people that have lived here for a long time.
But a lot of the tax base comes from those businesses. What would happen if we restrict that?
Well, the thing is, the corporate tax bases are not actually, uh, parallel between the larger corporations and the small businesses. So with reaching out to the community, I have heard a lot of people saying, well, we want Chevron to be able to pay their fair share. So not putting it on the backs of small businesses rather, Kelly.
I was in a small business here for like thirty-three years. But for me, um, having the corporations around brought me a lot of business.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, I mean, without it, I would have been depending on a very small population of, you know, of clients.
Okay.
So.
What would you do for the small businesses? I mean, but you, I don't know how long you've lived here. You said a couple of years and then the last three years, but there's been a a long time concerted effort to drive, uh, in fact, I started on a Mitty to a friend up on the Blue Resource and one of our ideas was to bring farmers market to the town, but that was like twenty years ago or something. And to be honest, they've got, I don't know if it's still operating. It may have stopped during the COVID, but there was a shuttle bringing the, uh, people from east of P C H into town for lunch and, or shopping or what.
Yes, yes.
Um, and, I mean, I've been around a long time and I can tell you that this town, between the downtown businesses and the big businesses that want, I mean, part of the whole reason why the big businesses do so well here is because we've got such a charming downtown.
Yes.
You know, and they love it. Their people love to live around here. It's, it's, as you said, a great place to be, but what, what would you do for small businesses that hasn't already been done? This is my long way of asking that question.
That's a great question and like I said, um, I'm out here getting my meeting with people in the community and I'm getting my foot in the door, so I'm here, um, to hear those hard questions and formulate a response to them. So I, the election's in two months and like I said, I want to get out here to the community and hear people's, um, opinions and concerns. So I appreciate the tough questions.
So you don't have any answers yet? You're working on the answers?
Yes. It's, there's a lot of, I've been doing a lot of studying up the budgets, as Kelly likes to point out earlier.
So the affordable housing, that's been a bit big issue. What, what are you proposing for affordable housing? Because part of what, uh, we've been saying is long, it's beside
Yes.
Or you talked about affordable housing, like in units that are multiple units on, um, lots or what, what is your thought?
Well, I feel like the budget is not allocated, um, enough to support people that are already here and, uh, so we have a lot of, you know, people on fixed incomes and they're not eligible for assistance with housing, so I am not when it comes to like building new housing, you can't just, you know, force that to happen. It has to still be viable on the market and this is.
Actually, I think there is a law that says that if you build over a number of units, you'd have to include some affordable housing options within your plan. I forget what it is.
Right.
Twenty units or ten units or?
Yeah, so what investor is gonna come in and do that if they know that they're gonna lose money?
Well, I think they're gonna lose money in El Segundo. Have you checked?
Right, but affordable is like, it's, it's related to the median income and our, our median income here is still quite high, so people that are on fixed incomes are, it's not even anywhere near the median.
So are you proposing that the city budget be allocated to assist people who live here? Is that what you're saying?
I feel, pardon me. Um, I feel like the, there's actually a surplus in the budget of thirty million dollars in the last fiscal year and I feel that those, some of those funds should be allocated more towards the community.
Like what?
Like assisting with, like you said, affordable housing or for instance, I've gotten a lot of feedback in regards to, uh, after-school, uh, like programs for the kids. I know that the school board is separate, but I feel like the city and there is a discretionary, uh, surplus of funds can reach out more and help parents. I know that my kids aren't in this school, uh, but I, I understand the struggle of having to have after-school care for three kids in three different schools. Uh, so I feel that the, there is discretionary funds and I feel that that should be allocated more towards the residents who are already, that are, the residents that are here.
I have a question.
Oh, hi.
Hi. What's the message with all the flags?
Oh.
All the American flags. I mean, it's not fourth of July.
Oh, well, uh, because I love America, that's why. And it's eye-catching, but yes, I, I.
It is eye-catching. You love America.
Absolutely.
City council, not president.
Oh, good lord, no, I wouldn't run for president. Because this is democracy. So this flag represents freedom. Freedom to choose our government and pursue our individual liberty.
Do you believe that?
It's okay. I like it.
I find it offensive.
Okay, well, you don't have to come back to my booth. I love democracy. Are you registered to vote in El Segundo? In El Segundo?
No.
Okay, have a nice day then.
Oh, so I don't matter?
No, you do matter, absolutely.
Okay, have a nice day.
Yeah, because I don't, it means that I don't need your negativity, so I hope you enjoy your day. Kelly, did you get that?
Why are you referencing me, Robin?
Because you're the one with a camera in my face.
Is it, it's, it's in your face? Are you gonna have a hard time, um, running for office?
Not at all.
Oh, it seems like you ran away from me though.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah. This woman's been stalking me for a year.
I've been stalking you? I document rallies. I document rallies that you're at with pride boys.
I would, these ladies were talking to me.
Go ahead.
I have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
Protect the seniors.
Yes.
What do you mean by that? Because I'm a senior. I want to know how you're gonna protect.
You don't look like a senior.
Yeah, I am.
Um, again, looking at the budgets, there is an, the amount that's allocated for, uh, senior programs or even assisting senior, it's extremely, extremely low. I feel that, uh, the senior citizens are sort of forgotten. And, uh, from going out and reaching out to the community, I've heard that, um, quite several times as well.
Really? Gosh, because I, one thing I love about El Segundo is that we have the senior housing at the park.
Yes.
We have a dial-a-ride, we have
Jocelyn Center.
Jocelyn Center, I mean, I, I, that's why I was wondering, do you mean protect the seniors or do you mean protect people who already live here? You know, the old timers?
Um, I suppose both, actually, yeah.
Because there are a lot of seniors that have lived here, you know, like since the forties.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I meant.
Raining for?
Yes.
Them, uh-huh.
Well, I don't want to say them, I mean, everybody is a group, so yes.
We are getting more senior every day.
Yeah, we are.
Um, that woman made me, um, reconsider your booth now. I've got phones going off. Are you one of those booth kids that we see at Trump rallies?
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
Well, do you think that, um, Joe Biden won the election?
Um, okay, so I'm not here to discuss national politics, but I, I'm here for the local community.
Well, but the local community is the community that will be voting and so we would like to, I mean, I don't care who we voted for. I think it's wonderful that everybody votes and how they vote is their own business. I do have some concern about politicians who, uh, are denying the results of the last election. We brought up democracy and that's the
Yeah.
big driving reason for being here. So do you believe that Joe Biden won the election?
So it sounds like I'm being put on the spot and I'm on camera, so I'd be happy to discuss that at a later time.
Would you turn off the cameras?
Sure.
If the election was not legitimate, then where's the evidence? How wide would you be? That's the one. I don't understand. Yes, that's, I can't understand what you're trying to say.
Yeah, I mean, I would find it difficult to put my trust into an elected official and, you know, they, as they say, all politics are local politics. It all starts, this is the closest thing to anything that is going to impact me and my fellow voters more than our local city council, you know, also the school board, but primarily the city council. So I would like to know, um, before I consider supporting you, if you believe that Joe Biden is the president and you can, I guess, answer that.
Of course, I believe he's the president. He is.
Okay, so, but you, but you did say you believe the election was stolen.
Yes, and what about the twenty sixteen election? So no one likes to say that one's stolen, but, okay, again, you were putting words in my mouth, but I'm going to, I, I do not believe that he was legitimately elected. This is a question that I've been asked. But I am still going to honor the office of president. I am not saying he is not a legitimate president, no.
Well, if we were to elect you to serve us on our city council, how will we know that you won't let your opinion cloud your understanding of facts and things that go down? If we were to have an election and you didn't like the results or the outcome, would you say, hey, that was a stolen election?
Okay, can you, that's a circular question there. You're asking me if it's a stolen election when it's on a local level.
Right, how would, how would I have my assurance that if you didn't like the outcome of the, of the election?
What election are you referring to?
Any election.
You're trying to say that?
It doesn't have to even be an election.
Or a vote, a vote on the city council. You're sitting at the dais with, you know, four other people and you have to vote on something. Um, I'd like to have, uh, 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 I would like to be rest assured that you are playing with the, the same set of facts that everybody else on the dais.
So you're, you're saying that my perception of facts is distorted? Is that what you're saying?
You think that the election was stolen, yes, I guess that is what I'm saying.
Because it's been, it's been, uh, vetted, uh, for months.
Okay, I am not here to discuss a twenty twenty election.
No, no, no. And it wa, no, I'm not, I'm not, I don't care about your feeling about the election except for the fact that you feel a certain way. Therefore, it might affect me and my community because you're gonna be on the city council. And I'm not sure if I can agree with a person who has a certain opinion that seems to have a touch with reality, that's all.
Okay, so what opinion would that be?
The opinion that the votes that came in, that, that Joe Biden was legitimately elected by enough people that he should have become the president. You know, instead, what you're saying is that those votes were, were illegal.
I never said that.
No, but.
What I'm saying is that that does not have anything to do with local politics.
No, 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 what I'm saying.
No, nah, okay, go ahead.
Let me say something, because I think everything has to do with local politics.
I disagree. Uh, but national politics are not the same as local politics.
Where, no, you're right, but that's where it starts and every person who lives in a
Absolutely, and that's why I'm here, starting on the grassroots level. I firmly believe in that. I, I know I never said it didn't matter.
So local politics have a lot to do with national because it's a stepping stone.
Well, the grassroots takes a very long time from the bottom up.
But here we are in twenty twenty-two and it's taken a long time. I mean, I've been around, you know, I know that twenty years ago must be different.
But, but the whole, but the whole question. No, the question, you can believe how you believe, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. I mean, the question is whether if, um, if someone doesn't believe something that is somewhat obvious, based on all the, uh, months of going over the ballots and everything and they still are not accepting the outcome of an election.
I actually did say that I accepted it because they asked me if I believe that he, if I recognize that he's president, which I do. I'm not here to, to get into a, a rabbit hole with the twenty twenty election. I've already addressed it, um.
I, that, that, I don't care about how you feel. I was just talking about, we were just talking about why, I think the question came up was because you wanted to feel what was your opinion of that. So you can understand how you feel.
Our city council is a representative democracy, like any
Right.
else that you get up through the ranks that you vote for. So I'm, as somebody who's got a vote and, uh, you know, have never missed an election and most certainly will vote, I would very much like to consider your candidacy. Um, becoming increasingly uncomfortable with the kind of your refusal to, to say, okay, on the one hand, you say, yes, I believe that Joe Biden is the president, but on the other hand, I think it was a stolen election. I'm not sure how you reconcile those two.
And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go down the rabbit hole anymore. I don't think there's really anything else that I can say.
No, you're, you're probably right. You're absolutely right.
So I think we're just.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hearing, uh, where you're coming from. It, it disturbs me, but, um, I do appreciate you being honest and candid.
Thank you.
Robin, can I ask how many city, do you go to the city council meetings?
Yes, I do.
What's the, what are the issues you see on the city council meetings right now? What, what's the last, uh, city council meeting that you've been to?
Uh, I went yesterday to the special meeting of the parks and wrecks with the city council. I went last night at the Jocelyn Center.
What was the issues there? What were the issues there that you were interested in or that concerned you?
Well, they were mainly talking about like filling holes in the fields and the parks and wrecks and the long-term, um, plans.
What do you think about the, the liability that the city, the liability that the city has um, to the retirement funds for the, for the police?
Um, what do you mean in terms of liability?
Um, the, the city is going to be in the hole because the retirement budget, that, the, what we are going to owe in retirement for the police and fire department too, is eventually going to swamp the entire El Segundo city budget. Are you aware of that?
Um, I actually did just look over the most fiscal, recent fiscal year, uh, report, so I don't understand where you're coming from.
So you don't, you don't know about that, um, that budget?
Unfunded mandate. Yeah, do you, do you guys? Yeah, uh, essentially, uh, the many city departments, including, I think, police and fire, and I'm not sure who all were given, um, quite generous retirement packages, like healthcare and, you know, spousal, healthcare, whatever. I think they, um, and also the amount of money, the percentage of your final income or your way of final income level that you take in retirement amounts. And for a long time, oh my gosh, probably fifteen, eighteen years ago, it was super common, um, there was a shortage of, I believe, specifically police and possibly fire. And a lot of municipalities, um, seemed to be a little bit flushed or they weren't looking down the road or what have you. And they made some really great deals with, uh, uh, different unions to pay money that it turns out is not, there's no, nothing in the budget that would generate income sufficient enough to pay for those unf, it's called an unfunded mandate.
Now, why?
You're mandated to pay that because the city council agreed to fund at a certain level. And then they turned around a few years later and, you know, certain aerospace dried up and it's come back, thank goodness, but, you know, budgets change, fiscal budgets change in cities all the time. Um, and so an unfunded mandate is something that you want to stay away from and they've been backing off and I think for future hires, at some point, they started, they changed up the, the deal so they didn't get quite as, a gravy train. But I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
That it's, there's, there's no way to fund it. Because it, you know, a municipality, just like a school district, is not a commercial entity. You can't just raise prices. You could raise taxes, but, um, I don't know if you lived here when we went from free trash pickup to having to pay edco and you would have thought that the place had gone up. We went ballistic.
Yeah.
I mean, I just thought it was the coolest thing ever and I didn't mind having to pay after all these years, you know, I was, we got free trash for twenty-five or thirty years or whatever, but,
Now it's automatic.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Without a passion, I would take it. But, um, people around here are very, uh, they have expectations of things and I just don't know what would happen if, you know, we started spending money that it might be right there today, but wouldn't be there for the future, so.
So the issue is, uh, if we expand the hiring, there's like a, a call that it's understandable to expand hiring of police, but that unfunded mandate is an obstacle. And I just wondered if you wanted to talk about that, but it seems like you're not aware of that.
I'd be happy to talk with you later, Kelly.
No, not talk to me. No, it's not about talking to me. I wanted to know.
Oh, no, no, I like talking to people too, but since you insist on being
No, I'm asking you a question. I'm sorry, you're running for office.
Um, so no, Kelly, no, Kelly, what I'm, what I'm telling you.
She's running for office, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, it's okay. What I'm telling her is that I would be happy to sit down and do an interview with you.
I'm not interviewing you, I'm asking you.
No, you, you are, but you, you even said earlier, you.
I'm going to be here, yes, I'm going to be here documenting your run.
And I said, if you want to give me an in, if you want to have an interview.
When I told you that, you ran away and you said, I live in my parents' basement. I think that's not really a thing that a, a candidate for office should say.
So that's not in date, I, okay.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Hi, what, what, what are you gonna be doing for small businesses? Because you support small business, like, and that's amazing that you support the the small businesses and everything. Um, what are some, like, key points for small business?
Oh, my gosh. Again, I'm here reaching out to the community, so.
Which I, I, that's amazing that you're small business, because it is like the backbone of our city. All the small mom-pop companies that kind of come together and they build up the community and everything and keeping it small, you know, and everything.
Small town charm.
Yes.
What do you do for your day job?
I'm a technology project manager.
You're still in technology? Is it with one of the local companies here?
No, no, I work, uh, remotely. I've worked at the A T and T headquarters before, but no, I've been working remotely since COVID.
Are you planning to participate in the, um, town hall meetings?
Yes. Yes.
So you're gonna be here every?
Every Thursday.
Do you have a website?
Uh, yeah, it's just my name, tiny U. It's on here on my, um. Um, you know what? I should, I can add that, um. Yeah, there's my connection or my, my Q R code on the back. Uh. Okay, so I, you just scan it with your camera? I did it because when you don't like, I used to just write down my email, but you scan it?
Your email?
It's everything, so it, you just scan it with the camera and then it puts, it just sends you to a link.
So are, is this going to have, the website is gonna have ideas and ideas and the platform and all that?
Yes, it has my cam.
I tried to find information about it, but I couldn't, I, I couldn't find it.
Yeah, well, because this campaign is brand new, that's why I've been, we didn't even, um, because we weren't even able to file the paperwork until last month. So that's why I'm out here getting into the community, seeing what people think.
I'm looking to learn more about what you think.
Thank you. I appreciate it, ladies, thank you. Or ladies and gentlemen.
Are you gonna have? Like position papers or Q and A or?
Yes.
F A Qs on your, on your website?
I need to update.
It is a new, it's, it's a brand new campaign, like you said, I haven't even.
Yeah, the paper, the paperwork wasn't even made available till the end of July and it was due August twelfth. So it's, it's an extremely short campaign period. Um, and like I said, I, that's why I'm out here talking. I've posted on, you know, social media, but I I didn't feel comfortable reaching out to the community without having official paperwork, saying I'm running for city council, so.
The other candidates have the official paperwork.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're all.
You should be here in Camden.
Yeah, there's five of us on the ballot and there's two seats.
Are you planning to walk the streets?
Yes.
Knock on doors?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I just got all my data. I'm, I'm a tech nerd. I just got all my data.
Data for your voters and everything.
Yeah, hopefully it's not so hot, but.
I know, right?
I'll go earlier in the day.
Is that why you were here early? And I kind of waited around. I got a potato snack that I'm glad to support a local vendor, but probably didn't need it.
I appreciate it.
I do want to ask one question.
Yes.
When I hear, I've been here a long time. What I hear is subtext. The subtext is, keep El Segundo. Right? Keep El Segundo like, uh, sort of like you know, non-diverse and cocooned from the rest of, of, you know, of, of L A. Keep us sort of unknown. I mean, because I, I've lived here so long and every time I hear keep, oh, let's keep El Segundo small, i- it was a subtext. It's like, well, we are small.
Yeah.
We are small and we're gonna stay that way. There's nowhere to grow. So what exactly does that mean?
It means maintain the status quo as is and you can, I'm not saying to not have diversity. There's still people that can move in here, but it's an expensive town and I, the thing is, I want to keep that small-town charm still. That's what I mean by keep El Segundo small.
But can, yeah, can't we have that? I mean, keep it status quo isn't the same as keep it small.
But it's already small, that's what you said.
In the recent year. In the recent years, a lot of people, diverse people have moved in and we're still small. So I, I just, it's always sort of rubbed me the wrong way when I've seen keep El Segundo small. Because it's small, it's gonna stay that way. I just don't want it to really mean keep El Segundo, when you say status quo. That really does mean what? Because I, you know, under the history of our, of this town.
Sounds like you're on the diversity and equity inclusion committee.
I am not. I'm, I'm not in any committee. I'm retired and I garden all day and.
I love it. I love gardening.
So, no, I'm not at all.
Um, no, because that's, that's um, that's, I find that to be a catch twenty-two because the si- thing. That by maintaining the status quo, that's anti-diversity. How do you propose to attract more diverse backgrounds here? How do you propose?
Any community, you just have a person who walks in and says, I want good schools or I wanna live in a truck and I can afford the house and I move in.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So that's not really status quo. I'm only saying this, I'll tell you why. I've lived here a long time and I've seen a lot, okay? And. There, when you say you wanna keep El Segundo the same, there's an underlying message there. And I'm not, you know, I'm, I know you're a political candidate and I'm just trying to find out if that means, that you want to. White.
No.
Because I'm white.
That is not what it means. Like I said, that's a catch twenty-two. Yeah, the way that, because you're saying, you know, keep it the same, does that mean you want to keep it white? That's already putting me in a. Status quo.
Yeah, it's status quo.
By small, we were talking about small and status quo.
But you also said that you wanted to protect, speak up and protect the families that have lived here for decades and decades.
Absolutely.
About all the new people. Or not lived here, actually lived here for decades and decades, but what about the, what about the newer people that are coming in and the new, all the, all the beautiful new faces that, all we are attracting, why would you not wanna speak for them also?
That's a great question. Like I said, I'm, I want, I'm here for the community that's here. And that's not saying new people aren't welcome, but it changes the dynamic of a town. When you have people that are now spending two million dollars for a house to move in here. You think that most of us could afford a two million dollar house that live here? No, we can't.
So you're trying to keep out the people that can afford a two million?
No, not at all, but that's what I meant by preserving the people that are here.
Well, but you moved into town too.
Well, I rent. I, there's no way I would buy here.
Renter and a homeowner, we're all still citizens. You know, I mean, we all, we all count.
So you wanna make sure that the, the property values are risen?
No, not at all.
That's what I, I heard what you just said, that you don't want to have people having to buy two million dollar houses.
No, I didn't say that. I was asked, what about the new people moving in? And I, as I've stated, am here for the people that are here already. What I'm saying is that the people that, it's expensive to move in here. And most of the people that are here couldn't, we couldn't afford to move out and then back in again. So it is a different dynamic and it doesn't have anything to do with diversity.
I mean, it does.
Speaking of diversity, how do you feel about our LGBTQ community?
I have no problem with the LGBTQ community. Oh, she asked me about the LGBTQ.
That come in packages dressed up like this, and I know I'm generalizing, but um seem to have a problem. It seems to be quite a big. Whistle in politics right now. People are worried about other people's business and. Keeping it small and the status quo and I guess I'm much more in solution. I don't, I mean, we have, we do have it. When I became a mom, I, I just realized that we're just embracing. We had one of those houses, I had a lease on it as well. A lot of our houses, you're all welcome, you're always welcome. And. And I kinda feel like that's the way El Segundo should be. And we've been growing in that direction. Uh, we have been growing in that direction.
Growing, pardon.
No. Uh, a lot has changed since I moved here uh thirty-one years ago.
In a good way.
Yes, in a great way. It's an amazing way.
And I'm, I'm proud to be through this.
I think it's.
I never used to be.
I think our community is.
I thought y'all were just saying it wasn't diverse.
It wasn't.
It's just becoming.
It's a slow process.
So how do you feel about the DEI committee?
Kelly. I would be happy to sit down. How do you, I'm sorry, how do you feel about the DEI committee?
Gosh, I don't have any problem with the DEI committee.
Just how do you feel about, you said, you said earlier, what were the words you used? Um, I'm sorry, I can't remember. You said, oh, you sound like you're from the DEI committee, but was that a?
Yeah, because this lady likes to come around and.
I asked a question.
No, no, the lady, yeah, this, I'm, I'm sorry ma'am, I forgot your name. Eileen. No, I'm talking about this lady with the camera on my face all day. Likes to thank people.
No, 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 no. No, but I asked a question about, about what is keep El Segundo small.
Yes.
Something about that, it sounds like it's a dog. For so many years.
Okay.
And that, it sounds like it really means keep El Segundo white.
Yeah, because how would you, how would you propose to make it less white?
I wouldn't try to make it.
Exactly, I wouldn't either.
No, but I mean, you have to actively, you have to, no, you have to, it has to be an active racism piece that is involved into this town. Given the history of the town, you have to, I mean, you can go anywhere in the world and talk to people if they know where El Segundo is. Especially if they happen to be brown people, they're like, oh, I don't go there because all of this X, Y, Z. People know. But people know it from all over the country and other pla-, other places in the world. People know of El Segundo based on the racist past it has had and it just, it's just a fact that it has had it. I didn't make that up. I think that there is still a lot that goes on. My children get followed home. My children get taunted by people. Um, I'm very, I'm very, listen, I'm very Pollyanna about this all. I don't wanna believe any of it. But I just, what I see with my eyes is what I see with my eyes. What I hear from people, other people that live that don't, aren't, do not feel empowered to speak up. But I feel that from other people that have to work here, that maybe don't live here, that are scared to work here. I, I mean, I've spoken to tons of people and there's a lot of, there's a lot of people that do feel that there is still a lot of very, very. Racist bones in this, in this town, as of course there's gonna be, like, it hasn't been seven hundred years.
But can you give an example?
I just did. My children get followed home.
No, but you, that's your personal experience and I can appreciate that. No, but an example of institutionally as a city.
I can.
Okay, thank you.
I can give you many. And I can't say names because I, I was in a profession that got privacy. But I had. I have been told about redlining.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Been told about redlining.
Redlining.
Absolutely. You know, guys.
I'm not familiar with.
That's something you might wanna look into, okay? So I also, you know, when I, when I, when I, when I, uh, to adopt a particular.
Um, no, I have water.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
When I refer people to somebody of color for, you know, as a referral, uh, I, I had a few people tell me. They didn't know I was sending them to a in-doctor. I had this told when I was opening my practice here in El Segundo back in nineteen eighty-seven by a person who was practicing. And I was looking to buy his practice. He said to me, well, let me tell you something. If you're a Jew, if you're a woman, or if you're black. It ain't gonna make it here in El Segundo.
And that was nineteen eighty-seven, so I would like to hear if there's, because uh this lady over here is saying it's systemically racist. So I wanna know what the city can do. So what can the city actually do to change that?
I mean, I think the city.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The committee is one thing.
Yeah, there's, there is a committee. And they've audited the city, looked at the diversity of the people that work here in the city. The diversity of the community. It's actually more diverse within the employees of the city than the residents of the city. Well, I'm talking about within the, the city, not, not like the corporate. Within the city. So that's why I keep hearing, okay, this is basically systemically racist. But I'm not hearing an example and of what the city could, well, first of all, is doing this.
I'm, yeah, I'm curious. But you don't believe it's existing.
I, I don't. I would love to hear an example of this current systemic racism here.
Again, if you, if my children don't feel safe walking home from school because so many instances, which really I don't wanna talk too much about because they get targeted, um, because people know our children, that, that they feel unsafe, that, that is a systemic city issue. And the city has to, I as a resident don't have to say this is how we fix it. The city has to say, it's not, it's not about just throwing a DEI committee out there, though I happen to be a big fa-, in big favor of it. Um, but it is how do we become anti-racist? What do we need to do as a city to go out into the other communities and say, we know where we came from. And we don't want to be that anymore. And that is a big, huge step. And that is one that not necessarily has been done by many, many residents. Many people like to say, oh, that never happened. I talked to a very, very conservative man that told me about some very specific redlining things that went down so far, not so far in the distance uh past with his neighbors. And he was even shocked. And he was super conservative and he was like, I can't believe they wouldn't let them buy because of the color of their skin and. Um, but it's not for us residents to say, this is what you have to do. As a city, we need to go out. And I'm not, I'm not in politics, but I am a person that is fairly well-educated. But as a city, we need to figure out how do we promote an anti-racist entity of a city? And the main thing you have to start with is as a city collective, being open and honest with the, 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 the things that have happened. And just because it happened in, what did you say, nineteen eighty-five?
Eighty-seven.
At eighty-seven?
Long after that as well.
But even in nineteen eighty-seven, if that was the last instance, those people are still injured. Those people are still injured. And to go back and to be able to say, our city has been wrought with this issue. And it was built, I mean, city lines and schools and all these things were based on stuff. And dang, we are, we are not that any longer. And we will go out of our way to not be that. Not stand in the middle of the street going, but is it? But is it? Because it sounds ignorant and it sounds like you want to negate the actual people that have been injured by the continual issues that have been.
It sounds like you wanna placate people emotionally. That's what it sounds like to me.
Not at all. I want people to be.
No, because you want people to agree, well, you want people to say, like, you want, say you have to be anti-racist. So if we do say, and I'm not.
I do want people to be.
No, no, because I.
Say you have to be anti-racist.
No, because anti-racist in the candy and since we get into uh.
You don't think people have to be anti-racist? You don't, you don't think as a society, we should.
Because anti-racist is not, the term anti-racist in a scholarly fashion is not, does not mean being against racism. That is not what anti-racist.
Go ahead, inform me. Go ahead. I'm curious what you think.
No, because I want to know because.
So I'm curious, what do you think the definition of anti-racist is?
I was asking, I was answering a previous question, which now I lost my train of thought. I apologize.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are you aware that the district and the city have different boundaries?
Yes.
Are you aware of why that is?
Um, that there's a different district for.
Yes, that's right. Wiseburg. Do you know why that is?
I don't. Tell me.
Um, I think we should look that up.
Okay.
It's a, it's a very uh, probably the biggest, I'd say, biggest group, but I think I'm being a bit harder.
Saying, saying what?
Uh, it was the biggest mistake that the city ever made and it was based on racism.
Okay.
The people who ran schools or ran the city when the school district was uh brought into being, wanted to exclude from the schools the people who lived east of Sepulveda, who happened to by and large be farmers. I think most of them Japanese strawberry farmers and whatnot. And the powers that be decided that they didn't want those kids coming to school with our kids. Now, mind you, that is about a hundred years ago, but it's, it was at the beginning of, before that, our kids went to school here and then went to high school in Hagerwood, uh, which by and large was white and uh, predominantly Jewish, I believe, at the time. So that's a little ironic, but they didn't want to have the people uh who lived in northeast of Sepulveda. Who was at the time, go to our schools. And by making the district boundaries separate from the uh, you know, the big swimming pool that's over at Wiseburg?
Yes.
Yeah, that's paid for with taxes from our business in the east of Sepulveda. So, east of PCH. So all of the businesses that pay their business taxes, the part that goes to schools, goes to Wiseburg.
I didn't know that, actually, yes.
Uh, I think that's about the status thing. Uh, I never thought. We could certainly use the money. I know, I work my ass off on a whole bunch of school bonds, passing money for the schools. And uh, if, if we had all that money, we wouldn't have needed the school bonds. We would have had uh, we would have been pretty. Teachers would have, you know, I was on the Ed Foundation, the, the Decent Years, the Ed Foundation, they would need to bust its nets every year. Coming up with all this money to go to our schools because there would have been, I mean, as it is, I'm not a real big fan of petroleum, but thank God for Chevron. They have by and large bankroll. Refinery right next to us, but they have bankrolled so much of what's gone on in our schools specifically. And if it weren't for Chevron being, I mean, it's only that the Smoky Hollow businesses have really come to fruition. They used to be little machine shops that were making stuff for the aerospace community and the airport and Chevron and whatnot. But uh, now we've got some businesses west of Sepul-, west of PCH that are, are uh paying a, you know, a good deal in taxes, which do go to our schools. But before that, it was primarily Chevron that was splitting the bull, the bill they had. I think it was sixty percent of the taxes that in the town that go to the schools comes from Chevron. So, I don't know. It's a, it's a very shameful part of our history and I think we have made those decisions in the run of life. Fortunately, um, some people who were in their families still don't think that way. And I think that's maybe what she's talking about.
Yeah, so uh, I think we all acknowledge this racist past, so apologizing for it. Where do we go from there?
Are, are you aware of the racial profiling that's still happening?
With the police department?
Oh, you mean alleged?
No, there's actual racial profiling that is still happening. Do you know the case that Keith Puckett has against the, against the city? Are you aware of that?
So I would like to hear uh more about what you say is racial profiling.
I just wanted to know if you're aware of it. It seems you're not.
Asking me a nebulous question, Kelly.
Racial profiling is not a nebulous question. Are you aware, okay, so you're not, you're not aware that the police use a license plate reader when people are coming into town and if they're black or brown, they stop them?
Okay, so you're saying that someone's license plate says what color their skin is?
No, they use the license plate number. They see if the person doesn't have an address here and they're not a white person, they stop them.
How would they even know if they're white?
Because they can, because. This is not what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about.
This is the value of the license plate reader.
So, that's fine, stop everyone. That's fine, stop everyone. Stop everyone, but they're stopping black and brown people.
But you're saying how?
Saying that the license plate reader then identifies what race the person is.
No, that's not at all.
That is what she said.
No, I am not. I said.
Saying is that they read the license plate first to detect whether the person lives in El Segundo.
What she's saying is that they read the license plate first to detect whether the person lives in El Segundo. Should that person not live in El Segundo, plus be black or Latino, they are more probable to be stopped. How do they know? Because glass is transparent. That's how they know.
So what if you pull someone over from behind and you're just looking at the license plate?
Well, like yesterday, when I called in, the catalytic converter was stolen at ten thirty in the morning over on Pine. They had already identified from the license plate reader that that blue Kia was a stolen vehicle. So they were on the lookout for that vehicle. That is the value of the license plate.
Well, I don't think anything
That's fine with me. That's fine with me. License plate reader is fine with me. That's totally cool. It's about racially profiling people. If you, if you research Keith Puckett, what happened to him, if you look up his case, you'll understand what I'm talking about.
Okay.
He has a lawsuit with the city. And so if you're running for city council, this is going to be something that you would be facing if you're on the council.
Well, I would like to extend my gratitude for you throwing your hat in the ring. I know it's a very great thing to do. Uh, I wish you well. Uh, I will stay on top of your campaign. And I hope you also, you know, it's often a great for other people to come and kind of bear their soul to you as well. So that, that might go both ways.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And I want to say I worked a lot here. Uh, thank you. And I, I don't know this lady, but I don't know why you're so angry with her because I
Oh, no, because she's been stalking me for a year.
Her questions led to some really good
Yeah, no, I like her questions, yes.
So I thought it was more like an interview.
No, no, her, her questions that actually relate to the city, yes.
Well, I thought, I thought everybody's questions were good. And I, you know, I appreciate you being here to listen to my questions.
That's why I'm here. I'll be out here every week.
Some of you answered two and some of you didn't. So maybe the next time
There's a lot to learn. Yeah, but like I said, I just threw, you know, my first week here.
This is a great, actually, so there's one other question I've asked several times. I'm curious what you have done in town that makes, that gives you the qualifications to then run for? Like, what have you done here in town that gives you, like, this is the next step?
Well, my passion has always been politics, uh, so I've been wanting to be in office.
In this town, what have you done? Go from like zero to city council, like? What are the qual, what are the qualifications?
I have the educational and experience qualifications. But are you asking, my kids aren't in school here. My kids are in LAUSD. I've been a member of the community.
Well, I guess it's like, why if I said, oh, all of a sudden I want to run for office, I took this place, why?
No, because it's for us. I love, no, I want to stay here. I don't want to
Have you done volunteering? Have you done other positions in town to give you that this is the next step?
Again, like I said, this is my passion here, so I have not been, if you're asking if I've been on like particular volunteer committees? No, I haven't. I've been involved in the Moose Club locally. I've been on other I know, it sounds funny.
What is it? Sorry, the Moose Club?
Moose, like the animal.
Oh, the Moose Club.
So yeah, like I said, I'm here to reach out to the community, see what's important to people. That's why I'll be here every week.
I will too. I'll be here too.
To see how it, to see how it
Yeah. Yeah, it's a learning process. Like I said, this campaign just started and I'm out there getting help, people.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, but the school system is separate from the city council.
I know, but I'd like to know what the rest of the community is involved in diversity. You know, the city council does overlook the other, the other boards as well that are here. It's not just, it's not just the council, you know, you're isolated, you're not isolated. You're out in the other communities as well.
So when, I mean, when you say diversity in our schools, that's a
How the diversity is, yes.
But that's a very broad question. Are you talking about diversity in curriculum? Are you talking about diversity in terms of students? Are you talking about diversity in terms of teachers?
Let's say teachers and
I think that whoever's best qualified for the job of teacher, the teacher or any job, should be the one to get it regardless of the color of their skin or their gender.
Do you think representation is important? Do you understand the concept of representation?
Yes, I understand the concept regardless.
Do you think it's something that's important?
I think that what's most important is to have high-quality teachers. And same thing with any, in any job, city job, private job. I think it's most, most important to have the top-quality candidates regardless of what their background is. Now, when you say diversity in the curriculum, are you talking about critical race theory?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear what you said.
I said, are you referring to critical race theory?
What are your opinions?
I'm absolutely opposed to it. I am opposed to critical race theory. Always have been, always will be.
And why?
Because it's racist in nature and it's Marxist. It divide, I think it's very wrong.
How is it racist? Before we go to Marx, can we address
Okay, I, I should have said Marxist first.
When I say it's racist?
Yes, because you're teaching that white people are oppressors and you're teaching a little tiny child that they're gonna be, you know, they're no good because of the color of their skin.
No, that's an overreach. That is actually an overreach. It's not telling the little child that they're no good. That's, that's not what they're doing. They're not going to the school and saying, listen, little kids, because you're white, you suck. That's not what's happening.
Uh, you know, I've seen the books actually that they put in this school and yes.
And they've said you suck because you're white?
Oh, no, it says, uh, when you're white, you sign a deal with the devil. You're here on stolen land. You know, it does, it says that. Yes, I have pictures of it. And then this was a book. I wasn't, my kids aren't even in this school and it bothered me. Yes, that was a book here for kindergarteners. Not my idea, a book about being white.
And what was the teacher that, that
It was, it was a recommended reading on one of, and then it, so it has like
The school board's already fessed up.
Asian, like
They're doing them, you're right, they do, they do. And they said that was our barb.
Yeah, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure the school board, because I went to, I attended a meeting and it did fess up to that, that
Yeah, it was a huge
They apologized.
And they said they pulled it off from something else.
Yeah, and I appreciated that.
And shame on them for pulling it off from something else and not
Yeah.
But they absolutely apologized for that.
Yeah, they did. And they owned up to it. And I appreciated that, respected that, so they
But that's rooted in critical race theory, Marxism. Critical race theory is Marxism and I will always be opposed to that.
Thank you.
Oh, it's okay. I know, I, Kelly knows, I've always been, you know, I I don't know how it works when you're in public. No, no, I, I have never been Yeah, because we're on a street.
Has anyone asked you like something, questions?
No.
Okay. Like, what do you think about the city's idea of putting ten million dollars into a failing swimming pool on the flood?
I think the money can be allocated in a better way.
How?
Did you, I'm sorry. Did you hear him? He said, did anyone actually ask questions of success?
Great. I'm trying, I'm trying to get the audio because it's loud, because that's my
Well, just like, those are the issues that we shouldn't concern
Sure, go ahead and ask. I'd love
That's why I'm here, to find out what issues are important to people.
They have a plan to put eight to ten million
I'm, I'm just trying to get your audio.
They have a plan to put eight to ten million dollars into the Wuruhari Swim Stadium. It's a failing facility. It's been leaking and sinking for decades and they want to put eight to ten million dollars into it. They just built Wiseburg School. It's city-maintained on a high school property. Why would they put ten million dollars into a failing facility? Look, what, do you think that that, that makes sense to do or?
No, not at all. I'm here, like I said, there's a lot that I'm still learning. I have this brand-new campaign. I'm getting familiar with all of the city issues and budgets, as she likes to point out.
Have you watched any of like the proposed budget or adopted budget meetings?
Yes.
Meetings with council?
I was just at a meeting yesterday and I'll be at every meeting between now and election.
Yesterday was the teen center and the Jostle Center?
Yeah, I was there last night.
So those are both failing facilities. They're decades old. They need tens of millions of dollars of improvement. And they're going to slap eight in plaster on it and call it useless. But why not just level those facilities and rebuild them, more level them altogether? They don't generate revenue. They, they don't. So it's an expense that the city puts with four residents. The city subsidizes the trash collection for residents. Residents did not pay for their own trash collection until ETCO got the contract in the city. Why is the city subsidizing the trash collection for residents in town? The median home price in the city is north of a million dollars. I would imagine they can pay for the whole trash. Why is the city subsidizing the trash collection? In blunt words, does that make sense?
That's a great point.
Great question.
It's, uh, the city just took eight hundred thousand dollars out of the equipment replacement fund. The city manager told city employees that city employees and their vehicles are the face of the city. So they took eight hundred thousand dollars out of the fund that replaces an aging fleet of vehicles. They have an understaffed garage that maintains over five hundred pieces of equipment. Fire engines, cop cars, paramedic, rescue units, every city truck. There's, there's forty people in an understaffed garage that needs all of the vehicles for the city. And they're taking eight hundred thousand dollars out of that fund to build a park. Like, how does that make sense? Who are we trying to appease by building? Tearing down the restrooms and removing the swimming pool from the park to landscape a park with no restrooms on the west side of town that no one uses? Like, why, why, why would we do that? Are you for things like that or are you against wasteful spending?
I'm absolutely against wasteful spending. I've always been fiscally conservative.
They just spent two thousand dollars per chair on chairs for conference rooms at city hall. They wanted nice leather smelling, whatever their, the, the reason for their decision was, that's what they did. So when they talk about construction at city hall or putting money into CPI or CIP projects at city hall, that's where that money goes. They're not going to Staples and buying a hundred dollar chair. They're buying two thousand dollar chairs. How do we stop the, the city government from wasting money like that? And putting it towards infrastructure or vehicles or employees or benefits or pension liability or any of these things in that. They've refused to agree to a contract with the police department and the fire department at this point. They're both operating with no contract because the city can't come to terms with that. Why are we spending so much money on all of this other stuff when public safety should be priority number one? You have a growing homeless population. You have escalating crime. Dozens of fire calls every day, whether it's a rescue unit or an engine. Why are we spending money on chairs and not on the people that work in the city?
Yeah, that's a great point. You are oversight, you're terrible at that.